Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and good morning. And we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. And Commissioner Schaefer will lead us in our prayer. And then Commissioner Robert P. will lead us in our pledge.
Mr. Broden of the Daily News Journal said there was no one speaking this morning, so I can give a long prayer. But this is my favorite, I think, commission meeting of the year, especially since we have a budget with no tax increase. But also, one week from today, we celebrate the 238th anniversary of our founding fathers signing the Declaration of Independence, which laid the foundation for our country. And I just would like to read an excerpt from that. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And some of us have fought for these freedoms. Others are still fighting for these freedoms. Some have died fighting for these freedoms, and others are fighting against freedom. Let us pray. This is a prayer for our nation. Gracious and loving God, we come before you in humble prayer for the United States of America. Bless our President, give him wisdom and strength to serve the American people and lead our country in ways that are pleasing to you. Bless our Congress, instill in them knowledge and understanding to enact laws that protect the sanctity of life from the unborn to the elderly and promote the good of all people. Bless the people of the United States. Make us aware of our responsibility as citizens to uphold the principles of life, liberty, justice, and equality. Send your Holy Spirit upon our beloved country. Make us people of faith in times of uncertainty. Make us people of hope in times of trouble. Make us people of compassion with those who are less fortunate. Make us people of peace in our homes, our communities, our country, and our world." And I'd like to close with some words from a song that was written in 1983 that I think especially in Tennessee we're all familiar with. "I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt about it, I love this land. God bless the USA. In God we trust. Amen."
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serino. Twenty-one present.
Thank you very much. Okay, you have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve as written.
Okay, we had a second from Commissioner Tiffany Phillips. Anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, our first resolution we have this morning is a resolution of sympathy for Dr. Barton Warner, a very distinguished physician that served us so many, many years. And we're going to ask Commissioner Baum to come forward and present this resolution. And Charlie, you go and invite all of the family members that want to come up and wish to come up, do so, what it does up.
Yes, we'll invite the family members up. And while they're walking up, I'd like to add that I knew Dr. Warner personally. We attended church together at First United Methodist Church for many years. Dr. Warner and his wife taught Sunday School, first grade, to the children in our church. And my daughter, Anna Jane, had them as teachers. And Dr. Warner provided a wonderful positive influence for my daughter and many other children. And that's just one of many ways in which his legacy lives on. Whereas it is with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Dr. Barton Warner, medical examiner for Rutherford County since 1999, and a friend of many. And whereas Dr. Warner is survived by his loving wife of 48 years, Lucy Lowry Warner, daughter Lindsay Robertson and her husband Brian, son Sam Warner and his wife Janice, and daughter Margaret Ann McKee and her husband John, all of Murfreesboro, and his pride and joy, his precious grandchildren, Sidney and Michael Robertson, Haley, Samuel, and Jonathan Warner, and Warner and Weston McKee. And whereas Dr. Warner was employed with IBM for three years before attending the University of Tennessee Health Sciences, where he received his doctor's degree with a doctorate of medicine in 1975, and whereas he served in his own private practice from 1978 to 1988 in Murfreesboro, and then served as a physician in public health with the state of Tennessee for 20 years, retiring as the medical director for the state of Tennessee in 2008, and whereas appointed as medical examiner for Rutherford County in 1999, the emergency medical services and Dr. Warner forged a partnership that is now being emulated by other counties. And we have indeed been fortunate to have someone with his talents and compassion for serving in this capacity. And whereas Dr. Warner showed great compassion for others while living a life of service as a physician, a deacon and elder in his church, a Sunday School teacher of students aged two to adult at First United Methodist Church, and through his service at The Journey Home and Doors of Hope, and whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 27th day of June 2014, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Dr. Barton Warner, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Dr. Warner by the clerk of this legislative body. I move for approval.
Second, back Commissioner Phillips, P., Farley, and many others. All of you in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you very much.
And let me add that Mrs. Stevenson has a memory box she would like to present the family at this time.
We've all been blessed by the memory of Dr. Warner and the service that he's provided for our county and so many, many countless other citizens of Rutherford County. And it's just been a blessing for him to be in our lives. Okay, next, we have a resolution of appreciation for another special person, Fay Elam. And Commissioner Ely is going to be making this presentation of this resolution. And we would ask Ms. Ely to come on forward while Ms. Elam come forward while Ms. Ely's coming up to make the presentation. And a few other people are joining her at the podium as well. Some of her friends from Main Street are here also.
I have to tell you something, though, that's funny. Some things never change. I was sitting back there and when you said, when you were approving the minutes, all in favor said aye. I said aye. Old habits.
Old habits.
Whereas Fay Elam has been an employee of Rutherford County since June 8, 1971, and has served with dedication and distinction. And whereas she has served in many different positions while employed with Rutherford County, she was hired in 1971 by Ben Hall McFarland, Sr., in the county clerk's office, and moved with him to the office of county judge, now known as the county mayor's office, in 1974. She then was one of three original employees of the newly established Budget and Finance Department. And in 1983, she began working in the Board of Education's Finance Office, where she later became the supervisor of accounting, before returning back to the county's Budget and Finance Office in 1999, serving as grant coordinator. And whereas, as grant coordinator, she assisted in applying for 110 individual grants totaling $29.5 million in funding, and was successful in obtaining a total of $11 million for Rutherford County, providing improvements in public safety, public health, tourism, parks and recreation, courts, and even individual homeowners. And whereas Mrs. Elam has now announced her plans to retire from this position effective June 30, 2014. And whereas Mrs. Elam served as a Rutherford County Commissioner from 1994 to 2006, she served 10 years on the Property Management Committee and was chairman for three years in which the following building projects were undertaken. New construction of county office building, archives, jail, sort, pause, Lane-Agra Park, Correctional Work Center, and juvenile detention facility to include youth services, juvenile court, and community learning center. Libraries in Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Laverne. Roads, Joby Jackson, Segal, Thompson Lane, Beasley, and Manson Pike Expansion. Five ambulance stations, Segal, Stonecrest, MTSU, Blackman, and Smyrna West. New EMS dispatch center, renovation of the historic courthouse, and land was purchased for the future build of the judicial buildings. And whereas, also during her three terms as county commissioner, there were 14 schools built. Twelve schools were renovated or expanded. Twelve new playgrounds were added. Five new football stadiums were built. And two football stadiums were upgraded. One gymnasium was renovated, and the central office was built. And whereas Mrs. Elam served as president of the Business and Professional Women's Club, president of the Tennessee Association of School Business Officials, being a member for 12 years, chairman of the Main Street Board, and chairman of the Convention and Visitor Bureau Board, being a member for 18 years, and she was a member of the Lions Club and Blue Raiders Athletic Association. And whereas, Mrs. Elam is the mother of Sonia Stevenson, whose husband is Keith, and proud grandmother of Selvin. And whereas Mrs. Elam has demonstrated in countless ways her dedication to the welfare of others, and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages who are proud to call her their friend. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 27th day of June 2014, does hereby extend sincere appreciation to Fay Elam for her dedicated service to Rutherford County, and wish her much success and happiness in all her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to Mrs. Elam by the clerk of this legislative body. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. And Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Sandlin, and Serino, and many, many others, and congratulations. All right, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Mrs. Elam, for your many, many years of dedication and service. And you have really been an asset, and it's been a privilege to work with you these few years I've been here compared to the many years that you've been serving Rutherford County. We have been blessed by your presence. Okay, to this morning, there are no public comments, so we're moving on to elections and confirmations. And we'll call on Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, on our desk you will find a list of notary candidates, and I would move for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner Jeff Phillips. Any discussion of questions? Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, there was a late addition to this. I think this lady has submitted an application an evening late. The clerk's office has reviewed it, found it in order. The lady's name is Teresa Diane Rich. She lives in Murfreesboro. She works for Nationwide Insurance. And this is a renewal, and I move that her name be added to the list.
Second, Commissioner Farley. So, in addition to the list, Commissioner Gooch, and that you already have, before you will have this one additional person. Any other discussion on that? All right, all of you in favor of the election of the notaries, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very, very much. There is no unfinished business. We will start on the reports by our standing committees. There is a monthly report from the Purchasing Committee, and we do need a motion for its approval. Commissioner Schaefer, do we have a second? From Commissioner Cook? Any questions on that report? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we're ready for Mrs. Elam, uh, Ely, to start a report from our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Item K-2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. For maintenance, increased expenditures for maintenance and repair of buildings and building improvements, and this is for the clerk's office to repair a fire alarm, $5,600, and decrease in unassigned fund balance, $5,600. From the county mayor's office, increased expenditures for other contract services, $30,000 for autopsies, decreased to unassigned fund balance, $30,000. Assessor, increased expenditures to the assessor's budget of other contracted services of $30,000, decreased expenditures from appraisal, other contracted services, $30,000. Unemployment compensation, this amendment comes from the pool of monies set aside, and now it is being applied to the department where the expense occurred. Unemployment compensation for the election office, $100. Maintenance, $4,000. Workhouse, $7,000. Juvenile detention, $900, with decreased expenditures from unemployment compensation of $12,000. Judgments, increased expenditures for judgments of $500,000. This is to fund our third-party administrator for estimated claims for property and casualty. And decreased to unassigned fund balance, $500,000. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay, Commissioner Jernigan, a second. Any questions regarding this? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K-2B, an Industrial Economic Development Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Industrial Economic Development Fund be amended as follows. Increased revenue from bond proceeds, $2,500,000. An increase for debt service, $2,500,000. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions regarding this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2C, a Debt Service Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Debt Service Fund be amended as follows. Increased revenue from bond proceeds, $9,602,318. Increased expenditure for principal on notes, underwriters' discount, and other debt issuance charges. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, from Commissioner Cook. Any questions regarding this one either? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2D, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended according to the schedules attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by references of set forth herein at length verbatim. And there are three amendments. The first one, to amend $40,500 in already budgeted staffed funds, and $5,864 in related benefits, a total of $46,364, to the staff and benefit line items. To amend $775,000 in already budgeted park and student handbook expenditures out of Function 72810. And to amend a net of $2,642,229 in revenues to the 2013-14 GPS budget, an additional $537,923 in expenditures, and increase fund balance by $2,104,306. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Turner, and Jeff Jordan. Any discussion of questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2E, a Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Central Cafeteria Fund be amended according to the schedules attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by references of set forth herein at length verbatim. To amend the 2013-14 Centralized Cafeteria Fund by reducing revenues of $1,037,441, and by reducing expenditures by the same $1,037,441. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. A second. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2F, a Resolution Approving the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority 2014-15 Budget. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority 2014-15 Budget be approved. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from someone, Commissioner Jordan, and P. Any other questions or discussions here? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2G, a Resolution Approving a Grant with the Tennessee Department of Health for Pet Adoption and Welfare Services. Whereas Rutherford County has received a grant from the Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $3,900, which requires no local matching funds, for an animal-friendly grant for the provision of low-cost sterilization of dogs and cats. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Health for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by references of set forth herein at length verbatim, for an animal-friendly grant for the provision of low-cost sterilization of dogs and cats, in the amount of $3,900, requiring no matching local funds. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2H, a Resolution Approving a Litter Grant with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Correctional Workhouse. Whereas Rutherford County has received a contract from the Tennessee Department of Transportation in the amount of $33,785 for the removal of litter on certain state highways within Rutherford County. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the period of July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by references of set forth herein at length verbatim, for the removal of litter on certain state highways within Rutherford County, in the amount of $33,785. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And do we have a second from Commissioner Cook? Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K-2I, a Resolution Approving a Grant Amendment with the Tennessee Department of Health for the Health Department. Whereas Rutherford County previously entered into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Health to fund programs administered by the county health department. And whereas the state of Tennessee wishes to amend the contract by increasing the travel line item by $2,000, and decreasing the supplies line item by $2,000. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the amendment to the contract for the period of July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim, increasing the travel line item by $2,000, and decreasing the supplies line item by $2,000, is acknowledged. Resolve this 27th day of June 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, from Commissioner Serino. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before reading the next two resolutions, I would like to read my conflict of interest statement into the record and ask that it apply to the next two resolutions. Because I am a retired employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
I would also like to read mine, and they apply to the next two resolutions. Because I am an employee of Rutherford County School System, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Commissioner Serino?
Because I've retired from Rutherford County School System, I have a conflict of interest about the proposal to be voted. However, I declare my argument and my vote to my conscience and my obligation to the constituents and to the citizens of this body represent.
Commissioner P.
Because my wife is an employee of the Rutherford County Board of Education, I have a conflict in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to the obligation I have to my constituents and the citizens that this body represents. And it will also be on the following issues too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Schaefer.
Because my wife is an employee of the Board of Education since the Challenger disaster, I may have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and vote answer only to my conscience and to the obligations to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Thank you. All right.
Item K2J, a Resolution Authorizing the Tax Levy in Rutherford County for the year 2014-15. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 27th day of June 2014, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, shall be 2.4968 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conform to the following levies. General Fund, .6521. Ambulance Service Fund, .0564. Highway Fund, .0126. General Purpose Schools, 1.1612. Education Capital Projects Fund, .0439. Debt Service, .5706, for a total of 2.4968. Section 2 deals with business tax. Section 3 explains that the county's slightest portion of sales tax revenue will be divided, solid waste sanitation fund 60%, general fund 20%, road and bridge fund 20%. Section 4 explains that the wheel tax revenue will be distributed, general fund 30%, road and bridge fund 30%, general purpose school fund 40%. Section 5 explains that the development tax fund will be divided, general fund 50%, general debt service 50%. And section 6 explains that the interest earned on idle operating balances, with the exception of the special purpose fund and the drug control fund, will be distributed, general fund 55%, general purpose school fund 25%, road and bridge fund 5%, and the balance to the general debt service. Resolved this 27th day of June 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan and P. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
21 yes, motion passes.
Item K2K, a Resolution Authorizing Appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County for the year 2014-15. Be it resolved by the Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, on the 27th day of June 2014, that the amounts hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the capital outlay and for meeting the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015, according to the following schedule. The total appropriations for the general fund, $85,135,900. The total for the Economic Development Fund, $309,907. Total for solid waste sanitation fund, $4,527,208. Total for the ambulance service fund, $11,869,875. Total for the special purpose fund, $5,000. Total for the drug control fund, $348,160. Total for the highway fund, $9,249,64. Total for the general purpose school fund, $306,688,721. Total for the central cafeteria fund, $18,333,292. Total for the total education capital projects fund, $2,400,425. And the total for the debt service fund, $41,842,468. Resolved this 27th day of June 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Thank you. And a second from Commissioner Schaefer and P. and others, I'm sure. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Schaefer?
I'd just like to bring up, in case anybody hasn't realized yet, this rate, this tax levy we just passed, is revenue neutral from last year, and it is a certified rate that is set by the state and the assessor's office. It's about approximately, basically seven cents less than it was last.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, one no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And thank each of you commissioners for your spirit of cooperation and working together. We've all worked diligently along with our department heads, our other elected officials, our school board, our highway department, everyone. I congratulate you and thank you for your role, major role, in helping us work through this difficult budgeting process as always, but you are to be complimented, and I appreciate your service. All right, thank you very much. We're moving on to other reports. There's not a report from the Health and Education Committee, no report from Property Management Committee, and now we do have one resolution from our Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Farley.
Commissioners, what we have here this morning is an agreement between the city of Murfreesboro and the Rutherford County concerning the emergency medical first responder program with the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department. Whereas it attaches an agreement between Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro providing for the conduct and coordination of an emergency medical first responder program, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference and set forth herein at length verbatim. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter to in said agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be, and they hereby are authorized to enter to and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached agreement between the city of Murfreesboro, resolved this 27th day of June 2014, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jeff Phillips, a second. Now any questions or discussion? All right then, all of you in favor of that? Please say aye. Are there any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We do not have a report from the Public Works Committee or the Steering Committee. Now is there any other business that you wish to bring before this body today? Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, it's that time of year again. It's Blackman BBQ time. So tonight from 5 to 8, I believe it's the 65th annual, I do believe. I could be corrected on that, but I believe it's the 65th annual Blackman BBQ. It's at the Lane Agricenter over on John Rice Boulevard, so come out there tonight, enjoy the music and ice cream and barbecue and all the folks out there. It'll be a great time. So come on out there early and enjoy.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Sandlin. Any other announcements or comments? Again, thank all of you for another good year. We look forward to continuing this process and journey together, and we appreciate it very much. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.